Planning Board, we're on item number three, new applications. Before the board is Tundra Drive subdivision expansion. This is just a pre-application consultation.
No, no.
I'm sorry, I went to the wrong line. So you get to take a break. We're on item number three of current application, the River Van Moma Center. Discussion of the sidewalk proposal for ten space parking lot addition to our existing medical office facility on a two point six five partial tax map forty-three lot fifty-two. Elizabeth, which is number an applicant. We did conduct the sidewalk this evening, so we should be able to go through those discussions pretty quickly, I think. In the past, there were a couple of requirements for the applicant to stake out some of the, I want to say shoreline zone and the one hundred year, twenty-five year floodplain that all appear to have been done. The board did walk this site with Elizabeth, with Elizabeth, and she was kind enough to point out all of the things. They have re-marked the permanent surface pool of the handicap spaces, which are now in the front on that. And discussion of the landscaping on the project, the board comments, and then based in correction, was that the forest, this application is for that extension of the drive and the back parking. We found the landscaping on that northerly boundary, which was a question along Portland Road, the existing and more than adequate. So we were fine with that. We did want, later on with the submission of plans, certification to where those pins were, and that is the actual lines, obviously, we'll need those. And, do another copy.
The surveyor is going to present us with a focal map. Would that be adequate for property boundaries?
He's going to have to show on that map where it is. The two other issues that the board had was one, the side, the southern, the northerly side, we needed the setback requirement to that drive that seems to be close as you're going back in there. And then upgrading plan, especially where the driveway goes down to that parking lot, obviously, there's going to be fill, and depending on what level you're going to come up to, it could be substantial. The flags where they were set, looks like you're well within the boundaries of being able to do whatever construction you want, as long as the grades and that are good. The parking spaces seem absent on the prior plan, so at this point, I just wanted you to know what happened with the sidewalk. I think we shared part of that with Elizabeth. Anybody else there had any other comments that they were concerned about? Did I overlook anything? Okay?
No, except just a line of direction. We were, you said you were concerned with setback on the northerly end, it's actually on the westerly.
Eastly side.
Eastly side.
Because all that shrubbery, we asked where the pim.
Yeah, exactly.
Confirm setback of the east side.
Right, where all the shrubbery is.
No, John's.
He's right.
That's for the setback, with the east side. The concern of the landscaping was more in the north.
That was your one.
Yeah, that's true. Okay. Go ahead, Marty.
Question, Chad. Was the existing parking lot back there anything else? Normally, operations per se are, I would say daylight hours, but it kind of has the season changes. Are you going to have any projectiles coming from the building towards the parking lot so that it can be somewhat visible? I'm just throwing out Elizabeth's question.
You're talking about light?
Yes.
There's a light on the back of the building right now that may be adequate enough. Either that or we can put a light in between the grass area and the new parking lot.
I'm just throwing that out as a, because you're checking back far enough, okay? And if, for your clients, okay? Back that way.
And for this.
That's the only reason I'm throwing that out as a thought.
And I believe it says that in the requirements that we need to have, like, yes.
Yes.
It does.
Okay, Mr. Redley, did you have any?
What we're trying to, yeah, you've already, I think you've already given the applicant, the applicant needs to know if there's anything special, anything else he needs to do in order to prepare the site plan submission, correct? You got a survey, which is terrific. Again, you established the location of the floodplain, and that was one of the biggest constraints we were concerned about. Because as you recall, the floodplain, the Kennebunk River floodplain is in fact an RP Every other shoreline zone is superseded by the CCS district regulations with the exception of the RP. The RP is the only one that supersedes CCS in that particular location, and therefore, we needed to know where it was. The concern was that on my GMS mapping, I showed a much larger floodplain than what we saw. I think we went over this already, but it's going to be better from Jim. We had a situation where we showed a larger area of the hundred year floodplain shown on that site. In fact, covering the area that the applicant's proposing, it's with this parking area, and that would not be permitted. The applicant has contacted the surveyor, who's established it based on the existing FEMA map, the FER map, and shows that it is outside of that. So that issue, that large issue was eradicated.
Can you confirm for us that the stakes that were marked with three stripes, that was a delineation of the floodplain?
That's correct.
That's what we thought.
Will that FEMA line also be put on the plan?
Yes.
We had previously provided the applicant, town planner, provided the applicant with several of the things we were concerned about before we go to the planner anymore in a sketch plan application. We were concerned about the shoreline overlay, and they already had that guidance that the setback line must be delineated on the plan. It's not new. We did require that they pave the back end, had some delivery truck there. Now, that's an extension, and it's out of sight, and it's way in the back, but there was no way to get around that part of the ordinance. So I had the board felt that it should be. The handicap spaces, and they already got them all, there's two up top on the exterior lighting. The plan hadn't been submitted, but they're going to have to submit one in accordance, so you're going to have to meet the parking lot requirement. Again, the grading plans, form order management, again, your engineer will be able to give those to you. And because of, depending on how much grade you have, and with all of that wetland down there, really some emphasis on that erosion control, form order management. Landscape plan, really not needed. The board on the sidewalk felt that as long as you're going to setbacks on that side lot line, or you guys have out front, looks really nice with some guiding, with entry blocks there. So we didn't find anything new. What's going to be required is just having somebody certify that what we saw is actual. So I don't think there was anything, anything new, and I think we answered all of your questions.
Yes. One thing, where the tank is, propane tank up in back, some kind of shielding, so in case somebody doesn't know how to drive, or gets icy slippery or anything else, you don't run into it?
Where was the propane tank?
Right here.
I missed it.
Is it buried?
No, it's above ground.
Right here. I think it's sitting on the septic or close to it.
Yeah, but I mean, the two patches are farther down, but I'm just saying, it's directed to either building, even though coming down the alley, in case it's.
What would be adequate?
Is that an existing propane tank?
Yeah.
And that's not part of this change?
I don't know how you can dig in that area.
No, you would bother that, you put in balance for that, for management, that situation.
Just a thought.
Six inch or four inch steel might fill the car. So it's basically, it's a garden, essential. As you have it at the town hall, it just keeps the car from pumping. If that's essential, I would just, I wasn't.
We're at twenty-five to thirty feet from the parking area.
Can you scale it again?
I'm going from the back of the building. It was in the grassy area before the high grass.
This is the drive, that's something less, so that's twenty-two to twenty-six feet from the actual, and that's an earth thirty feet, this is about the same, this is a little bit, so here, minimum, it looks like twenty-five. Per discussion, this is something you may want to look at yourself, I mean, I don't think we have the requirement to do that, so.
It's not required, just think.
Only if you feel there's fire hazard.
Because.
The problem that we have is.
I didn't even see it.
It's sitting right on the.
Oh, it's that.
We're big enough to notice. I mean, we couldn't really take down.
Most concrete blocks, those big barriers?
The Jersey barriers.
The Jersey barriers. Who's the propane supply?
I think it's eastern.
It may be worth documentation from them if they would require something.
And usually, sometimes they'll do it for.
Does the applicant have any other questions of the board, or requesting any additional information from the board?
Not at this time.
That's one of those should, but not may.
Does the town planner?
Well, no, it makes sense. It's icy back there.
No, I'm fond, I look forward to the applicant getting us.
Looks like a great, great project.
It's the frontage one, so we can use that move forward.
Good luck, you guys are, I want to say, set to go, we'll have another review next time, but I don't think you'll find.
We can go ahead and spend more money, right?
Yeah.
Hopefully, we won't do that. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
New application, we have Tundra Drive subdivision expansion. This is a pre-application consultation. The proposal is for four lot expansion of the existing Tundra Drive subdivision, including the extension of about six hundred foot of Tundra Drive on four point eleven acres, tax map thirty. It's in R two and the shoreline overlay and stream protection district.
No, Mr. Chair.
I didn't know what that was.
Point water is not in stream protection.
Yeah.
That was something I put in there and then came back and reevaluated and realized that shoreline, actually, it is in stream protection because you put it superseded by.
Shoreland is a hundred to that seventy-five. Yeah. So shoreline overland. Surveying, we'd like to make presentation for the board on your request, application.
This is not really a presentation, you guys have all the plans talked out to us here, the engineer already explained alone, but it's just a pre-application, so we just want to get things started. The sketch plan has been done, passed that the big copy. I got, we did file for the tier one application, the tier one for the wetland that's like, eighty-four hundred thousand, wait, eighty-four hundred foot, wetland anyway, that's associated with the group, and the permit by rule application. So anyways, the tier one application, we got the news today that it's been approved.
Okay, and do we have, well, you can submit that.
I think, I don't know if we've sent a copy to you, I have a couple too. What else? The AMI Co-op also responded to us, and I think it's okay on their end. They just need a date that we're going to start, you know, after you guys, so we got the ball rolling.
We'll try to, we'll try to move through this if we can.
But they want us to do the work between, you know, it's always like between July fifteenth and October second, so we just sort of, you know, as best as possible, so.
Were the applicants provided a copy of your?
Their agent was, I figured, oh, it was your agent, right? So I sent you all this stuff.
You'll be the next one.
Okay.
Yeah, you'll be involved after, you know, I'm just trying to stay a little bit of money here.
Okay, so they might not have, they probably don't have a copy. Didn't Paul provide you a copy of my notes, then?
No. Some of the, some of the, some of the findings, and, do you want to go through them?
No, go ahead, Mr. Chair, you do a great job.
Within the current zoning and our spacing both requirements, you are going to be required in the shoreline overlay zone to delineate that zone out of the plan on a subdivision plan, and that wasn't on the original sketch plan that was submitted.
The wetlands need?
Do we have another copy of this?
Yeah. You can, yeah, you can review with it, if you have any questions. Great idea, thank you.
Thank you, I don't have an expert.
So we've gone through the project summary, current zoning space requirement, that's just going to be, when your engineer does the work, which is a line they're going to have to put on, make sure it's on the plan. Our review indicated, and the planner's review indicated, you're falling under the cluster subdivision part of the ordinance, and all subdivisions of more than four lots are mandated to be clustered. We did remove the requirement going forward, but we have to go by the current ordinance that is there right now to that coast to town for approval. If you go real fast, you have to follow it, because that will be in our year, probably.
Excuse me, those four lots or the four lots people doing, it's going to be a couple of seconds, they're all going to have frontage, so I don't understand why they're going to be clustered.
The whole, the board has to consider all of your phase one and phase two, not just the new four.
And they will all have frontage, all of them will. All six lots will have the frontage.
Yeah, the problem is that we have this provision in the ordinance, it's hidden very nicely, it's in section, I forget, six three, six four, whatever, that any subdivision of four or more lots has got to be clustered.
I thought they didn't exist anymore.
It was not supposed to, it was supposed to go away, but we have, and this board has approved that that's supposed to go away, but that has not gone to town meeting yet, because the whole ordinance isn't done, and they chose, oh, we'll do it all at once, and that's one thing we can do. We got rid of the requirement, not only were you required to do cluster, but you also required a common septic system and a common water supply for all lots, if you probably remember that one. That's gone, but the requirement for clustering.
Itself wasn't part of it, and oversight and not, I mean, oversight, not having time to get there. So right now, that's where, that's where we're at, we have to look at it clustered. So you could, if you look at the clustering regulation, you could reduce some of that and shift it around a little bit, save some construction aid, that's up to you. But you, and it is eight point four, so all of the standards in eight point four of our ordinance under the cluster subdivision of our land use ordinance would have to be the max. Now, you said you have a tier one permit for the string crossing?
Yes.
And that will have to be provided so that we have that as part of our package when we come in. Firewater supply.
Question real quick, I may, on stream crossings, is there a floodplain associated with Gulf Mill Brook in this area?
Yes. Yeah.
I believe there is.
Because we turn it down the low red, where on the other side of old Polish Road there, the Gulf Stream, high waters and everything else, yes.
Yeah, that's down at the mouth, but further up, yeah, there's a small.
So that needs to be investigated, that, Mr. Gabois?
Yeah, I think the floodplain is, I think the floodplain goes to, if I'm not mistaken, the edge of the wetland, but he does have to indicate where that floodplain is on there.
And if a crossing is being put through it, could cause.
I believe, didn't he do that last time, I thought he did floodplain when he did wetland?
No, he only did wetland because he wasn't doing the crossing at the time.
Because we had, when we walked it, we had to determine.
Yeah, but I thought this plan, you know, for the previous phase was drawn as oddly as it is, so, you know, we were trying to work around future expansion and that wetland. And I thought, I may be wrong, but I thought he had indicated both floodplain and wetland.
Well, I think, I think though, actually, the wetland, in some places, the wetland extends beyond the floodplain, because some of those wetlands are actually upland wetlands discharging in, and they're not part of the associated wetlands with that string. For instance, that shark jagged wetland, I think that's on lot one, that's shown there, that is an upland wetland, that is not a wetland associated with the string, until it gets down to the elevation of the wetland, that is associated with our Gulf Mill. So I think he, I think he did do that.
Did he?
Pretty sure he did, because I think we did look at that. I should have pulled that file, I should have pulled the old file, it's a very good point to be made. Make sure you check that.
So what's it called, that flood?
It's the floodplain. It's, yeah, it's the hundred year floodplain. All, all water courses, all water bodies have it.
You had, you asked me that last time, because my two classes are not quite to that board.
Right, that's right.
Yeah, to John's point, I think that right, but my memory is going, so I wasn't going to come in. I think we may have some of it on that front side. The good news, the good news for you is, under the fire protection and your water supply, instead of the sixty-five thousand that is currently required, there is a provision for the fire team to make their termination of what would be adequate for the proposal, and he has made that determination, that you only need a ten thousand gallons of water, so. So that's, that's huge for you guys. So from, from the board at this point, you obviously have your, your plans to go, it was a good project, first time you did exactly what was asked, you had all the plans, spec, nothing else. But the board is, on this one, is it's a subdivision where we're required to do a sidewalk. So I'd like somebody to consider when we would like to do that.
Before the next meeting?
Well.
The same day of the meeting, right before the meeting?
Well, question.
Sir.
First of all, sidewalk, because this is over on the other side, is it preferable to turn and stake everything if Mr. Gabois or whatever else on is available? I mean, you know, by the next meeting, I mean.
Question for the applicant. He threw the chair, what he, I guess, and that's a good point, Marty. When does the applicant think they would be able to show us the center lines of the road, these delineations of the wetlands, and any setbacks, I guess, if it pertains, I can't remember the other, I think there were some, when we walked it first time, there were some residences up in there somewhere.
No.
None?
This is across the other side.
Okay, we're going to get one on this one.
Huh? Do you have any ideas?
Don't forget, it went down like this.
You build a temporary in the bridge so you can walk on it.
Do you have an idea, like, a week, ten days, do you think that's going to be after? So, in a, two weeks? We have two weeks from now, we're going to have another meeting, we can either schedule it for then, or a month out, but that delays.
With that being, you only got a small door to do this project.
No, but Paul also needs to.
Yeah, he's going to have to get that.
So if we say ten days, maybe?
Well, two, two weeks is the earliest that we can go.
Okay, two weeks.
Well, it's not.
No, you can go anytime you want, if you want.
Yeah, the board can, the board can determine that, but that's why, Marty, it's a Marty's thing, we needed some reference to when you thought he'd be able to do that for you. Then if we set a date and a time, and you get with him, and it can't get with the town planner, as soon as possible, we could change.
It says your next meeting, I think you're going to be doing exclusively, if you recall, over on the zone lines.
Well, that's fine, this would be before the meeting.
Or we can end in a week, depending on what way you can stake it up.
I mean, it's already has whether Paul is going to be going to stake out.
Can we, how, how many members of the board present here, if the applicant were to get with the town plan and said by next week, they could be ready Thursday, is anybody available next Thursday?
I don't know what my schedule is.
Yeah, I don't.
My principal isn't telling me that yet.
You're available, man.
Huh? You're available, let's just take that.
Yeah. Be more comfortable on the twentieth or twenty-seventh is a normal night, other board members would be available to do that.
I could make it next week, but not the week after.
You're not going to be at that meeting the following week?
Correct, I'm at previous, previous vacation time.
I can make it on the twenty-seventh.
We're getting thin here.
And it does have, it has to be a Thursday?
No.
No.
It doesn't have to, most of us set aside this time, would volunteer to come in here. So we, our schedules are pretty open on Thursday, it's the general.
We shoot for the twentieth, and it's not too pushing it.
Marty?
Well, you're best, I can't, should find a notification.
So one, two, are you going to be available next week, John?
I might, I have a season, but I think I'll be back. I can't guarantee, but I think I will be.
Okay, we're going to have to, what are the, what we're going to, what we're going to have to do, I'm going to have to call some of the other planning board members, we want you to go to a bunch of work, we're not going to have people available. What we'll do, and what, what we're going to do, we're going to shoot for either the twentieth or the twenty-seventh. We have a couple that are, three that are in question, and so we're going to have to poll the board and see who can be available on the twentieth or the twenty-seventh, and then, once we have that answer, we can get back to them and let them know when we're coming. The board all in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Okay, and it would be before a regular meeting, it's held on the twenty-seventh. If it's on the twentieth, the board have a preference to the time?
Thirty-seven.
Six thirty?
Well, this is going to be a hard slot, right? So it's going to be, have to be around six.
Yeah, I agree. So a little, yeah. Walking, six? Okay, six on the twentieth, we shoot for, and actually, on the twenty-seventh, it's still going to take us as long.
Do we have a quorum on the twenty-seventh?
Well, see, we don't know. Yeah, that's what we're about to do, we've got a poll for both dates, and if we have a quorum, then we'll get this scheduled, if we don't, we'll have to reschedule the meeting on the twenty-seventh as well.
That's what I'm thinking about, I've got a little work to prepare for that meeting too.
Okay.
Because I only have a week to get it out to you guys, if you may have an adequate time to review.
You may have a quick time to review it.
So are you, are you advocating to try to do it on the twenty-seventh instead of the twentieth?
No, I just assume if the applicant, I just assume do the sidewalk, get that out of the way. Put it over in their court because they got a lot of work.
Yeah.
But in order to put, for you guys to do the sidewalk, Paul needs to do his work, right?
Correct.
So he's got a week. So we need to tell him he's got, he's got to get ready for the twentieth, right?
Yep, and we all, we all get a hustle on this one.
And we'll get with you as soon as we can when we know for sure.
But right now, yeah, I'll do me know. The question right now is, right now, the twentieth, how many members do I have?
You got a quorum.
I have a quorum. So if we do it the twentieth, then we got a quorum.
We have a couple on the, is he going to be back?
Rich won't be back. His was longer for tonight, I think.
Okay. So look, we're going to shoot for the twentieth. If, if he can't get the work done, let the town planner know. Town planner has the latitude, then we'll move it to the twenty-seventh. If I have it, if I have it. If we have a quorum, we'll have a quorum. Yeah. Or whatever date is scheduled.
He's got a form, he's got to show the center of the road.
Center line of the road, yeah.
Basically, it is going to be cul-de-sac again.
Yeah, and that, and the floodplain, or the cul-de-sac is going to be. Do you want, we?
For the cluster, it's going to be up there.
For the cluster, are we in a basic plan showing the, because that can be reduced. We don't have to meet acreage.
It's going to be clustered, but, I mean, they're, they're going to need to show us the cluster plan.
Yeah, so he'll have to look at our clusters.
I frankly don't think that the center line of the road is going to change it.
Now, the plan has to be submitted before us.
Yeah, it's going to be just basically shrinking it down. That's about it. Shrinking it down the size of lots or whatever you want. Twelve foot wide green space around.
So everybody bring your, bring your boots. Does the applicants have any other questions? Have we addressed everything that?
Well, this cluster is like the open space in general.
Yep. Give me the traditional open space cluster design.
So we're going to be clustered all the way around lots.
There's nothing says it has to be all the way around. That's obvious.
It has to be shown to them.
Yeah, you have to have green space somewhere and you have to have a cluster as much.
Well, the bus will actually have, it's for a balcony area, creates an empty space.
From the right away of it.
And, you know, it's, yeah, we'll have to take a look. It's section eight four. Take a look at section eight four. Paul's very familiar with that section.
Eight four?
Or give the, the section wetland, then we can make it a full space.
Yeah, what you're going to do is you have to reduce the lot size.
I mean, I've shown.
We haven't done a cluster. Paul does, and he'll be calling us, Susie. He'll come with a sketch pad and we'll have to sit down and over. Cluster, session eight four.
That's of the.
Something, no, no, no. No, it's in zoning.
It's not in the subdivision or anything?
No, it's in zoning. Subdivision is just basically processed. Processed and standards.
Open space, own and common by all of the dwellings. You have to have covenants in that to make it, so the common land restricted to recreation, conservation or agricultural purposes. The common open space shall be shown on the development plan and with appropriate notation on the face. Once you've delineated on the plan, you can't, you can't change it. To put it in our lot later, once, once you've said that's open space, that's forever.
Yeah, it's, it's dedicated open space.
First of all, may be dedicated for acceptance by the town for operation as a, kind of a recreational. You say you are in a great location, put in a ball field, the town might want to take over the, the nine hundred and thirty acres.
Paul's pretty good at that stuff.
I've seen.
Plus the Brooks, I mean.
Yeah, probably. He's good at coming up with good ideas.
Now, does it have to be considered cluster? Can it be like anywhere bypassed or anything to, no?
No, well, too bad Will's not here. Could find a shallow, or it should have been here somewhere, but.
It's going to be acres.
So, so what are the criteria that would make a plan a cluster subdivision versus a traditional?
More than four.
No, 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 not, not the threshold to make it. What would?
Reducing lot size down to?
To what?
To no, no less than fifty percent. So if we're in R two, these women go lots.
So there's something they could possibly do here is take lot, not lot two, which has a lot of.
So I can actually get more lots out of it.
And make, well, no, you, you keep the same number of dwellings, but you, you get a smaller spot to put them on and then the space left over you conserve.
You might be able to get.
So you could take, you could take lot two and maybe conserve that and make your other lot smaller.
Close the subdivision is allow you to maybe get more lots depending on what property.
Yeah, it's possible.
It's possible.
If it's possible.
Usually it isn't.
You said to no, you can, you need to reduce the lot size by no more than fifty percent of the, what's required?
Yeah, you don't have to, but you can. You can reduce down to.
So a two acre lot could go to?
One acre.
One acre or more.
Right.
And you can go to seventy-five, you know, instead of seventy-five feet or two hundred feet, you can go on and go all the way down to seventy-five foot.
But you do have additional cost, but it's down to units now, it's not lots.
And the purpose, the purpose here too, allowing this is so that anything that is, should be conserved, you have that latitude to move around and save and that kind of stuff as well. And that should be considered. That's why Paul.
But you can't go over seven units.
You can't go over what?
Seven units or something.
Sure you can.
No, you go.
You just have to pave the road.
After seven units or?
Seven units, you start paying, after seven units, you start paving the road.
The pavement?
Paying.
Blackout.
It's going to be paved anyway.
Paved.
If you build it, then you're going to go to town standards. If you build it to our, our town standards, yeah, you could make petition it down and take a look. Absolutely.
Is this road a private road?
It's, it starts off as a private road, yeah.
At one time it.
But the private road is the same standard. Once they, of that number of units that they have, it's the same standard as a town road.
Was the initial phase?
Is there still a moratorium on the town testing road?
It's a private road.
Really a moratorium on that.
He just prefers not to.
He prefers not to, but there's no moratorium on it. I just wanted you to know, in the past, the town hasn't been taking over roads. So if you go on a plan seven, you have a plan for.
What did you say the town is not? Did you say the town is not?
No, there was a period of time where they weren't accepting it.
No.
Where they said they weren't accepting.
Roger would rather not, but if it's the town standards, we have never turned them down. We've always accepted them. If it's a filter system.
You've got to be petitioning and accepting the town meeting, but it's never been turned down. Okay. I've been to town meetings that they've accepted.
Here?
Yeah.
So you could, you could very possibly get.
Paul's really good at working. Well, you have one, I didn't. Okay, not north terminal.
So cluster might be more beneficial than me.
Could be, it could be an advantage to.
Guys, it's about, if there's any, yeah, it's about the ten F percent. If there's anything else you feel you need, we'll take the time. But I think if you check section A, get it, get it, give it to Paul, make sure he's got it.
Oh, 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 the two one, I thought you were making back my notes. Oh, terrific, great.
All right, and we're going to close, close discussions on, Hunter Drive and I hope we gave you the kind you were hoping for tonight.
Yes, thank you.
Planners report.
Yes, sir.
Need to know?
No, there's not a lot to need to know. I'm going to be more into the punch. Kate's cooking along, very nicely thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
If you haven't seen the, the article in The Village, which is the Canabunk periodical they have going on over there, there's a nice three page spread on Kate's butter in there. Other activities that we have going on, EDC is going to want to talk to the planning board and be forwarding the townhouse corner district to us to do something with. We're meeting on the Tuesday to go over that. Howard's coming back on the twenty-seventh of this month. He'll be presenting his, his marketing findings to the EDC, which will be of utmost interest for this board, especially in consideration of how we have been proceeding with zoning and whether or not we've been close to the market in some of our assumptions. So that'll be very good. Comprehensive planning committee has got to get going because I believe, I believe our selectmen here is going to be on it. Is that correct?
Correct.
And I believe that Donna's going to be on it. She committed to be on it.
Well, she, she volunteered, then has been formed.
Well, it's going to be. It's going, we can't, I can't sit around, we can't sit waiting on it. We have to do this concurrently. So when we have these meetings, we have to do some of these things concurrently.
Dan, is there potential, once we get in all of this marketing information from the contractor, that the selectmen might want to hold a special term meeting? Ted has some plans, but I'm not sure what his plans are. He's talked about making sure that this guy comes in and talks to the selectmen, but I'm not sure what his plans are. My only plan was if, if there are some of these other issues that we could have ready in the near term, you want to start focusing on, getting them ready. If there's a potential to have a special term meeting.
We are going to have town meetings, but it's not going to be an officially declared town meeting. We're having a town, a town workshop.
Yeah, no, I know, that's part of the contract.
That's part of the contract. There's also going to be presentation, which EDC is going to make a presentation to the selectmen. Howard's coming to give the data and then they're going to have to get, they want to take the lead. So, so, great, you guys are going to appear before the, the selectmen.
Present Howard's findings.
To them. But in terms of what the, the leisure databank and some of the, the image issues and the branding issues are concerned, that's also going to be a public, a public workshop.
A big one.
To, to get public ideas. So we're moving out, we're now moving out of the focus group and the focused interview phase and into the actual production of the definition of the image, definition of what direction we want to go and branding issues. The marketing issue is not going to be surprising. From the upside, let me just put it this way. Given our, we have many potentials. We have a lot of market opportunities available to us, but that's because the green is just underrepresented in so many industries. That's our economy. So that's, that's going to be of interest, especially as we could proceed with our, our zoning ordinance. We also, I think we're going to get some pressure from the selectmen. I said this for the selectmen here. We're going to get some real pressure from the selectmen to get cooking if your, if your ordinance done. Get the ordinance done. We're going to get a death.
Pressure, you can say that pressure there.
Kick them apart, yeah. So we're going to have to put some, some pressure on there. And, and right now, as you can tell, we're starting to simulate it. Seeing some activity occurring.
It's going to be a busy time from now, so.
I, I thought it would be this, this early spring or the late winter, but we were dead, as you know.
Any, any other major areas?
There's no other major.
Any of the board giving you to bring up other business, public comment, Dan? The only thing I would, I would say is if, you know, if you want the comprehensive planning committee to get together, get with, get with Todd because, I mean, he's talked about it a little bit, but, you know, he's a guy that puts all the folks together for that, so.
Well, I think, I think help from, from various community members, from board members, from citizens to make recommendations for the comp plan committee would be helpful.
I don't know what he has for list, I know he was.
It's a limited list. He hasn't been as focused on because of town. And, you know, I, I push and I think, you know, if there's more, if anybody has any suggestions on somebody who could submit, who could serve, who would provide a new perspective or a good perspective, that'd be great. Please do so. We really, this is, we're not redoing the comp plan, we're making updates to the comp plan. They're relative to some of the things that Howard's revealing and some of the issues that we've been grappling with for a while. And as you know, we've got several districts, we're contemplating some business districts that are not in the comp plan and are going to require some amendments to the comp plan to do. Also, remember the economic development plan, which is, this is only a little piece of Howard's thing. It's a piece of the economic development plan, will be incorporated in the comp plan at some date when we're finished.
Question? Well, part of my role when I come here is I update the selectmen on the happening. You know, this is what we reviewed, this is what you guys reviewed. And I will bring up the issue of the comprehensive planning committee. I'll, I'll work to push them and try to get, get that over. So I'll make sure I put big letters here for my. Sure.
All right. Question on that, are they also planning after reviewing one eleven? The reason they're also coming along that quote magic crystal ball. They're trying to talk about the Rusino again and everything else is.
I, I, I don't know, I, I can't. Are we going to be considering Route one eleven? We, yeah, we're doing a zoning ordinance for the whole time. We're rewriting the zoning ordinance. We have to take on a little more.
I'm sure, I'm sure during discussions with that committee.
The way it was just described, okay? It was Route one and the corner. Didn't say anything about one eleven per se as prime territories. That's why I'm going at like the way we were speaking.
When we do it, when we do our review, whether the comprehensive plan and the way that it's raised, once that's built, we move down one eleven business anyway. But we, we do as board need to look at it and we need to look at it. If the EDC has any recommendations, if our contractor feels that that's an area that is a potential underutilized area, whatever, those are all things to consider as we're making our changes. I can't see the comprehensive planning committee getting together and not discussing one eleven. It's going to happen no matter what.
Because the EDC has never even really per se mentioned much about one eleven.
No, they haven't focused on it.
It'll be discussed, Marty.
It will be discussed, Marty. And, and the thing is, remember, the EDC is still focusing on, on, on very broad issues there. They're not, they're not really focusing right now on the, on the mechanics of the, of the economic development plan. And you guys are going to be more involved in that than, than they are. They'll, they'll come in and they, actually, one of the issues I have got to discuss is coordination between their activities and your activities. And that's going to be sorted out. But very simply put, that is, that is one of the business districts we've got to take on. And quite frankly, to be honest with you, we also, from the results we've had from the citizen survey, don't think that the issue of residential quality, agricultural quality, rural character isn't still very broad, vibrant in this town.
Well, we think it's very.
It's not something we're going to, it's not something we're going to, we're going to step aside. It's not going to be superseded by the, the efforts in business development. We're going to find that it's going to be in lockstep with business development and many residents of this town still hold it sacred. And therefore, a reexamination, wow, reexamination of the R four district and our rural preservation policy is going to be in order. Because I think we're going to find there's going to be a demand for us to do more than what we're doing right now. That'll be the implication. But Howard's going to reveal that from the, the community survey. Find out what his findings are, probably on the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth. Twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, about June.
June.
Yeah, this month. And they, they'll be, they'll be meeting with the EDC and those are public meetings. So you're going to want to come. And they're now being held here and they're being taped. So if you can't come, you can watch it on YouTube. So if you can't come, you can watch it on YouTube.
There will be a published report, too, right?
Sorry?
There will be a published report?
There, yes, there'll be a hard, hard copy report eventually. It won't be at this meeting, I, maybe there won't be, I don't know. I was assuming, yeah, Howard's got it, it's going to be.
Any other kind of?
You two?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Say a motion to adjourn?
Second.
I have a second, any other discussion here, I'm a favorite. Just like, like, thank everybody, we did a lot of business tonight, folks, we did exceptional things.